Good, how do you, oh, how are you speaking? Okay.
Uh, we don't, we're streaming.
I need to do a quick split screen, Chris, because of the new agenda you set out last night, so sorry.
All right, we are streaming, so we are live, so Chris, if you want to bring us to order at your convenience.
Okay, sorry, just kidding, this pulled up. Um, all right, good morning, thank you for joining us for the March meeting of the University of Utah Board of Trustees. Uh, we'd like to welcome Dr. Carter to his first Board of Trustees meeting. He's the new, uh, Senior Vice President of Health Sciences, and welcome, Dr. Carter, good to have you here.
Thank you.
Also, uh, I'd like to excuse David Parkin, Steve Price, and Randi Shumway, they're all, uh, traveling. The meeting materials have been posted last week, and the trustees had an opportunity to review the general consent.
Eric Gardner, we also have, um, we also have Tony, uh,
Oh, do we have Tony?
University's CFO, uh, starting very shortly, Tony, do you want to, you know, how to go to camera here?
It's impossible, he's in this room, and he looks fantastic.
Well, good to see you again, Tony. Pleasure to have you on, on, on board. Uh, we'll go to the general consent agenda, and thank you for reviewing these items in advance. Is there a motion?
Actually, Chair Gardner, just one note, uh, based on last night, um, just, just to make sure the record is clear, we are pulling two two items to the action item, and those two items are, are the, the two hospital-based renovation projects, so uh, this will reflect in the record, I just want to make sure the rest of the trustees know the consent, the, the consent agenda as is, but minus those two, two items.
Right, and those will be, well, we're going to address those right after the, uh, general consent agenda. And the action agenda, so, okay, is there a motion on the general consent agenda?
I also move to approve the general consent agenda.
Thank you, Jamie, is there a second on the motion? Okay, thank you, Maria. We, uh, we have a motion in a second to approve the items on the general consent agenda, any debate or discussion? Okay, not hearing any, I will ask for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you for the support for the items on the general consent agenda, and now we will go to our general, our general agenda, and here I'd like to invite, um,
and Chair, Chair, Chair Gardner, why don't we start with, uh, Jamie Sorenson announcing the honorary degrees?
Okay, we'll go to that first.
Yeah, so, okay, Jamie?
It is. Um, we are excited, we, we, um, we have, we had a committee who came together, um, to, to select and make recommendations to the president for honorary degree winners for this, um, upcoming, uh, convocation and graduation, and we are thrilled with the the results of that process. Um, this year, uh, honorary degrees will be awarded to I King Jordan, Julie A. LaSond, Cecil O. Samuelson Jr., and Linda C. Smith. To tell you a little bit about these individuals, um, uh, King, I King Jordan served as the first deaf president of Gallaudet University from nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand and six. Um, he has created enormous awareness of the importance of Gallaudet's educational contributions to the nation and the world. He's a phenomenal individual, as we've heard about him, and we'll be excited to have him at graduation. Julie LaSond is an advocate for women in STEM education careers and entrepreneurship. Um, she herself has worked for more than twenty years as an entrepreneur and an engineer in the mining industry. Um, she is the daughter of Pierre LaSond, and is, does a lot to help support our students in the University of Utah LaSond Entrepreneur Institute. Uh, Cecil Samuelson is a three-time U of U alum, he also is a former, um, Vice President of Health Sciences here at the university, and then served as uh, a general authority for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and as President of, uh, BYU, and we look forward to uh, recognizing him. And finally, Linda Smith, um, is a U of U alum and faculty member, uh, she is the um, founding member of Repertory Dance Theater, and as we sat in this meeting, um, we learned so well how, what an incredible contribution she's made to the dance world and to the arts world, uh, especially here in Utah, we're, we're thrilled that we'll be able to honor her, so, uh, please come to graduation where these, um, folks will be recognized, but we are excited and, um, want to express thanks to, uh, those committee members who participated, Randy, David, Maria, um, we, from the trustees and others, so, uh, we are, we're thrilled with this, and unless anyone has any questions, that's all I have, Chair Gardner.
Hey, thank you, thank you very much, there. This is exciting, and I always look forward to the, um, honorary degree dinner that we do. It's, it's great to, to meet all these wonderful recipients and all that they've done, and, and to honor them, and it's great to hear more of their stories in, in detail, so Jamie, thank you, the other trustees that served on the committee, and to, to everyone else involved. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now go to, um, the action agenda, and I'm going to invite Dan Lundgren and Gina Haley to share information about two items, the main hospital expansion and the Redwood Road Health Center expansion.
Dan, you may be muted.
Oh, thank you. Uh, so again, thank you, thank you for the opportunity, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk a little bit about process, and Gina will go over the projects, and we'll, we'll keep this brief. Uh, historically, what we've had, the hospitals and clinics go through a process of capital review, a five-year forecast, goes through our, uh, master planning process into our hospital board. So, our hospital board is an advisory board, um, and they approve our capital projects. Historically, anything over, you know, roughly between three and a half and five million dollars would be presented as an action item to the Board of Trustees, and that's been something that's been, um, pretty, pretty much been around for a number of years. Uh, for some reason, these two items, the Redwood Road and the ED expansion, were listed under the general consent agenda item. Uh, it really does need to be a, an action item, so, a kind of apologies to, to the, to the board, uh, but what we want to do is give you a, a brief overview of those two projects, and we want to honor the project, the honor the process, and what's most important is that we have, uh, the integrity and follow the process of the university. Um, so with that said, unless there's any questions, we can move to a very brief overview, knowing that this will be presented in April as an action item, uh, for next month. Any, any questions about process before we go on with a brief overview? Okay, Gina?
Thank you, I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay with everyone, and, um, let me just put it to current slides. So, thank you for having us again, um, here, just to talk briefly about these two projects, the first one we'll talk about is a Redwood Clinic Expansion. Redwood, for some of you who may not be aware, is one of our community clinics, it's close to West Valley, it is a busy clinic, busy population, um, a, a large, uh, variety of populations, new Americans and so forth, and there is increased need for services out there. We did have, uh, some opportunity to get ARPA funds, um, um, a couple of years ago, and the ARPA funds have a health and wellness focus, they are also needed to be used by a certain time, by the end of twenty twenty-six. Um, at that time, we actually worked with the state legislature to switch, um, to state funding, and we were granted twelve point five million, um, funding, which is, uh, really amazing, um, to be used for, towards Redwood. The additional balance would be covered by our University of Utah Hospital and Clinics, uh, capital funding. The scope of what we are planning to renovate, uh, Redwood is twelve exam room pods, two MRIs, uh, for radiology, staff support, support space, and the wraparound support patient services, those include things like financial, uh, services for patients, case management, and so forth. And again, this project is really important because it helps support the increased care and services to our patients, bringing care closer to the communities and the patients where they live. In terms of project financials, the payback is around, uh, right under five years, you can see the five-year outlook here, the operating margin is about five point five million. Again, the project budget, uh, comes at a total of twenty-three million, a little bit over, we have, uh, twelve point five coming in from state, uh, funding, and, uh, the hospitals and clinics costs will be ten million, almost eleven million dollars, um, that will be supported by our strategic capital. Any questions there before I move on to the emergency department project? Okay, I'll move on. Next, is our emergency department renovation, this is another really important project to us at our main hospital. Um, the main campus emergency department is currently overcapacity and seeing constantly high left without being seen rates, that means when a patient comes into emergency department, if the emergency department is so full, they, patients may leave without actually getting the care they need, and that's something we want to, we want to reduce as much as possible. Our rates hover right now, they range from four to nine percent, depending on the day, nine percent is a very high rate, and so we're working, um, quite a bit to really reduce that, and again, get, um, care to the patients when they need it most. This expansion will support increased capacity and throughput while helping decrease the left without being seen rate. Um, we'll do that by a new triage, uh, station and things of that nature, and a new workflow. Um, it will also enhance a patient and staff security by adding and expanding security checkpoint, this, this is really important for us, because we do tend to see a lot of patients, or some patients are going through acute crisis, uh, can be violent, and so for us to put new security measures is really important for our teams. Um, it will add, uh, further space in the waiting room, I'll have a re- results lounge, which will triage patients in a better way, and access to the main hospital thoroughfare. The scope includes two additional triage stations, triage meaning patients are actually assessed quicker, um, right when they enter the ED. Uh, ten more patient treatment rooms and further, uh, waiting area seats. The project budget for this one is fourteen million, uh, fourteen point seven million dollars. Um, we are working with philanthropy, thank you Heidi, I, um, Woodbury and philanthropy, uh, to help support this cost, and then the remaining will be through our, um, capital, uh, UUHC, um, funding. And with that, I will, happy to take it for any questions on this project as well.
Um, Gina, on, on both these projects, are they, are we doing the design build on them?
No, we are not.
Okay, so more traditional approach, okay, and, um, we've, we've kind of kicked the tires a little bit on the costing and how that, you know, how that balances with, with appropriate costs for things of this nature.
Yes, our teams have been really thorough in looking at assessments and so forth, and thinking about different alternatives, which has been talked about through our, um, hospitals and clinics committees and master planning groups, just to make sure everything aligns, but we have assessed different options, and these are the most cost-efficient uh, options we have, along with bringing the care that's needed for both of these populations.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Katie.
So, so Chair Gardner, there, so no action required at this point from the board, uh, as I mentioned, well, this will be an action item for, for next, uh, next go-around, and really want to extend our appreciation to give a quick update, I know this was a, a quick, a, a change from last night, so we appreciate the opportunity to at least speak to this, give the board at least some context uh, about what is about access and about our, our patients, uh, you know, being concerned about our patients, so we'll stop there, if there's any other questions, uh, we can turn it back to you.
No, I, I appreciate, I appreciate you, uh, putting this, uh, where we did in the agenda, it's, it's nice to hear these in more details, they're, they're great projects, and we'll hear a little bit more and vote on them in April, so, next month. Thank you, Dan, thank you, Gina. I'd, I'd like to invite James Tabery, Professor of Philosophy, and Gretchen Case, the Faculty Director of Medical Ethics and Associate Professor of Theater, to present, um, item three point oh one.
Thank you, um, would you like us to share our slides, or is that something that happens internally?
I'm going to defer to Chris, I believe you share your own slides, isn't, is that correct, Chris?
Uh, we actually have a, Megan, Megan will share, thank you, uh, so just, yeah, when you're ready for us to advance, so Megan can pop them up.
Great, and, uh, Dr. Case is actually going to lead it off, so I'll step back and give her the floor for a second.
Hi, so I am Dr. Gretchen Case, um, I am actually in the Department of Theater, and I've been in the Department of Internal Medicine for fifteen years, and if you ever want to hear that story, I can tell you about it. But I'm here today to tell you about the degree proposed for Medical Humanities undergraduate, BAS, BSBA, in Medical Humanities. Um, I direct the Center for Health Ethics Arts and Humanities, we do medical humanities and health humanities. Um, I like to say that healthcare is about humans giving care to humans, you have to understand the humans and the human experience to really give that care. Medical Humanities is nationally and internationally recognized as thinking about ethics, arts, humanities, social sciences, law. What is the human experience when we are talking about interacting with health and healthcare? We have this first slide up here because we know this is a moment when we in Utah are being asked to think really carefully about education and where we are putting our efforts, and we feel like putting our efforts into this medical humanities undergraduate degree is going to help us continue to, um, prepare the best healthcare providers, clinicians, but also prepare everyone to interact with all kinds of ideas of health and healthcare, so not just medicine, but what health means in their community. And as you know, um, the arts and humanities are ways that we not only learn about what it is to be human, but we learn to write, to think critically, to use all parts of our brains. Arts and humanities really aren't separate from science, medicine is based on science, but it's also based on all the things that the arts and humanities tell us. I'm going to turn things over to my colleague from philosophy, Jim Tabery, to tell you a little bit more about this degree.
Thank you, Dr. Case, um, when I read that newspaper article, um, uh, about the first, um, education appropriations committee meeting back in January, and saw that quote from Senator Vickers, "I hope that we could put it on brochures for the medical humanities degree." Senator Vickers is a pharmacy grad from the U, he's a pharmacist, he's a state senator from down in Cedar City, and he was explaining to the, um, to the subcommittee why he needs, um, uh, employees that are trained in more than just the basic biology of pharmacy, he needs people, as you can see there, he says, are critical thinkers, are critical writers, who communicate and interact with others, critical decision-makers. And that's really what this degree is all about, and so, um, it was timed quite well, uh, could you go to the next slide, please? These are two images from, um, a annual document that's put out by the Health Humanities Consortium, that's an organization that, um, oversees health humanities across North America, and really what we want to just draw attention to here is what an opportunity this is for the University of Utah. Um, new health and medical humanities degree programs have been going up very rapidly, um, that's a timeline on the left, you know, just a few in the seventies, eighties, and nineties, and then starting about a decade ago, they start going up quickly. Um, what's striking, though, is when you move to the, the map of the United States on the right, the Mountain West region is essentially a desert, um, not just literally, but a medical humanities desert. Um, there is no degree opportunity to earn a major in medical health humanities between Nebraska and California, Canada and Mexico. Um, there are opportunities to get minors, there are opportunities to get certificates here and there, but really, there's this wide-open geographic space in the Mountain West where we feel like a degree in the medical humanities is a real opportunity to draw students to the U. Uh, next slide, please. And this is the last slide, and it's just to say that I think we are uniquely positioned to deliver this major, it is a genuine one-U initiative, so there are four different colleges and schools across the university that are involved. There are over a dozen departments and units that are contributing classes and faculty. Of course, we all know the U is affiliated with a premier academic health center, and that's a huge resource for something like a medical and health humanities degree. As Dr. Case mentioned, we have organizations already, like the Center for Health Ethics Arts and Humanities, the Arts and Health Innovation Lab, which shows there's already expertise and interest spread across campus. Um, the other thing to say is just that demand is there within our community, it's not just this geographical, it's fact that here at the University of Utah, we have very good reason to think that students are going to be interested in this. The introduction of medical humanities courses, the sort of door into this world, and registration, that course has been going up and up each semester after semester. Um, in the fall, we, uh, in the philosophy department, are already going to be offering two sections of this for the first time, in part in response to the increasing demand that we're getting. Um, the medical humanities minor is already in existence, and that has been enrolling regularly, and then the last thing I'll say is, um, you know, we haven't been advertising this degree because, um, uh, it's not approved yet, but we have been presenting it at undergraduate council, at the academic senate, and we've already had students reach out and say, how do I enroll in this major? Um, just from word of mouth hearing about this, and we think that's a really exciting development. And then lastly, the degree itself will be administered through the Department of Philosophy, despite the fact that it, it's very interdisciplinary, and there's good reason for that, um, our faculty internationally recognized in philosophy of medicine, bioethics, philosophy of disability. Um, the department already offers many of the courses that are central to, to medical and health humanities, um, and we've already got the resources, faculty, staff, graduate students that are well-positioned to, to support this. And so we think it's a great opportunity, and we think the University of Utah is the place to do it, and we look forward to any, um, suggestions or answer any questions you may have about it. I think you can stop sharing now.
I have a question, as I kind of looked at the peer review, the one point in the peer review where they talked about how there's only two required courses in the program for it being a major, and how where there's not that strong core, that it maybe will, um, make it more difficult for students to transfer in, what is the response to that, to that concern that was raised, and you know, do you see that if we're not capturing these students early in your program, that we're not going to, you know, so many students make decisions later in the process, later than sometimes we want, are we, do you feel like you're going to be able to capture students later and bring them into the program based on this concern that was raised?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Jamie. Wha- what, uh, he's referencing is the fact that when you're looking at how students move to the major, they almost take the introduction to medical humanities at the very beginning, and they almost take a capstone course at the very end, um, in between there are, in between there are core could we move there, that, thank you, in between there are core areas that all students must satisfy by taking courses in these core areas, but they get to pick and choose how they want to move through that, um. There is no right answer in terms of how much structure you impose versus how little structure you impose, we think having those bookends where they're all together in the beginning at the end, and then they sort of get to ex, move through the medical and health humanities in the way that they think is most suiting to what they want to do with that in their career, is the best match for what we have here at the University of Utah. Um, the, uh, external letter that, that, um, was written by a member of the Health Humanities Consortium that commented on the proposal that we put together, that was one of the features that she really emphasized as a real strength, and so, um, I think we could have imposed more structure, and honestly, you know, if it turns out a year or two into the program, it looks like that would benefit, we're certainly happy to go back and revisit it, but in the sort of balance between you gotta do it the way we want to do it, or, or, um, actualizing student autonomy, because the medical and health humanities is such a diverse and interdisciplinary space, we wanted to err closer in the direction of letting the students sort of make their pathway through it, as long as they're meeting together at that beginning and endpoint.
Thank you, Jim.
If I could just add that, um, this really is a truly interdisciplinary field, and we do want students coming in with a variety of ideas about what they would like to do with the degree, and if you look at who's working in and with degrees of medical humanities across the country, it looks very different, some people come in through literature, some come in through the arts, some come in through philosophy, so this will be, this will be in line with, with what other degrees are doing as well.
Any other questions, we'd be happy to answer.
If not any other questions, then I'm going to call for a motion. So, is there a motion to approve item three point oh one, the new BSBA degree in medical humanities?
So, salute.
Thank you, thank you, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Uh, any debate or discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
That has been approved, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Exciting, I'll now, uh, go to item three point oh two, and I'll invite Hans Upkim, Department Chair and Professor Electrical and Computer Engineering, and Jake George, Assistant Professor of Electrical and Computer Engineering, to present item three point oh two.
Good morning, uh, I'm Hans Upkim, I'm the Chair of Electrical and Computer Engineering, first of all, thank you so much for considering our proposed program. When you travel somewhere in the United States, you might hear a question that what is the University of Utah good at? Um, how would you like to answer that? So, my version of answer is this, have you seen this year the Super Bowl? So, that featured our technology, Luca R., that shows the, where the state of the arts neural engineering stands across the world, across the United States. So, the pro, proposed program is built on our world-leading research to train and educate our graduate students, we do the most up-to-date knowledge. So, I believe that this is our responsibility as the world-leading research institution. Um, and I would like to now introduce Professor Jake George, who has been actually developing this program, uh, for all for this, uh, for this program, Jake.
Thanks so much, Hans Up, and, and thanks, everyone, for having us today, um, to share our exciting program here. So, we're talking about the neural engineering training program, which is supported by the Utah Deep Tech Initiative. Um, so this would actually create the world's first degrees and certificates in neural engineering, which would position Utah to lead the upcoming market growth in neurotechnology, which in large part has stemmed from University of Utah spinoffs over the last twenty years. Um, so this is an interdisciplinary program housed between, housed in engineering jointly between the biomedical engineering and the, uh, electrical and computer engineering departments. We also have support from the School of Medicine through letters of support from neuroscience, neurology, neurobiology, physical medicine, rehabilitation, and we're also collaborating very closely with College of Science, College of Health, College of Humanities, very interdisciplinary program with faculty from all over contributing to this. Um, I will say that neural engineering is different from neuroscience in that we are applying engineering methodology and quantitative elements to solve problems in neuroscience. So, this things, this means we do things like, uh, develop devices to treat neurological disorders like Parkinson's or dementia, we're also developing new rehabilitative tools like prosthetics that are directly integrated into the nervous system, like the cochlear implant, or something like Luke Skywalker's bionic arm that can restore a hand to someone who's lost it. Um, Utah has a really long history in neurotech, we have multiple companies that have been founded here at the University of Utah, that's just one example. Um, one of the most commonly used tools in neuroscience is the Utah Array, um, and it was founded here by Emeritus Faculty, um, Dick Norman in biomedical engineering, and then it was later commercialized by ECE Faculty, um, Florian Salzbacher, and that company that sells that Utah Array is named Blackrock Neurotech, and they just received a two-hundred-million-dollar investment, um, with the majority of that money going to hire new employees here in our state. And it's not just this company, we have dozens of companies now, um, coming out of a lot of the technology that we've led in Utah, um, that are now starting to make a large global impact. And these companies are leaders in the field, and they're now serving on our industry advisory board to help craft this program. And more broadly, the neurotech market is just rapidly growing, and we need students to start filling these, um, highly technical jobs. And actually, this past year, neurotech was actually the largest sector of medical technology invested in by venture firms, um, which is a huge market shift. Um, so for the first time, we're actually seeing more VC money going towards neurotechnology than there was going towards the traditional one, which would be pharmaceuticals. Um, so neurotechnology offers a exciting potential, um, to treat, uh, systematic ailments with targeted bioelectronic therapies rather than, uh, you know, the traditional thing like opioids or other challenges we might have faced with pharmaceuticals industry. Um, so as a longstanding leader in this neurotechnology space, it's really our job at State of Utah to continue to lead the nation and the globe in this area, and so we need trained, um, uh, students that are skilled, responsible, and ethical in this area, where they're been working with emerging companies and these new companies growing in this hot new field. And so with support from the Utah, um, System of Higher Education's Deep Tech Initiative funding, we created an industry advisory board with both local and national companies. We did a formal program evaluation through the Center for Teaching Learning Excellence, um, which included all of our current students, faculty, and alumni. Um, and then we also established this program with feedback from all those different stakeholders. Um, so really what we're proposing is stackable credentials, which include an undergraduate minor, undergraduate certificate, graduate certificate, master's degree, and PhD degree. Um, and, and the requirements for all of these have been shaped around our formal program evaluation, our industry advisors, the existing program faculty, and then all of our partnering, um, departments and universities. And we're working closely with our peer institutions here, um, in the state of Utah to create this stackable um in the state of Utah to create this stackable program where you can go into industry, back into academia, um go into higher education and you know, at different institutions, and ultimately culminate in a large training program across the state of Utah that will prepare us to lead as we have been doing in in the neurotechnology space. So thank you all for the opportunity to present today. We're really excited about this program, and um I look forward to answering any questions you might have um for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from trustees?
Dr. George, it mentions a bu- a broad underground undergrad background uh for for these programs for the masters and the PhD. Are there specifically, do you see computer scientists or double E folks uh going into this? Or it seems like um I'm wondering if the the background would 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 require both engineering and and biomedicine or something like that.
You're exactly right. Um, this is a very interdisciplinary program, so we kind of have basically four core pillars within the program that we're teaching. Um, one of those is neurophysiology, so you really have to have like a neuroscience background. Um, another one is um focused on like computational science and and AI essentially to be able to manipulate the data that comes out of these types of systems. Um, there's also a large component of um, you know, robotics and applications of the types of signals and things we're doing. And then the fourth area is on like the embedded systems, electronics, implantable type things. Um, so it really spans a lot of different um directions. But in terms of what we've seen historically from the students who are currently working in this space at the University of Utah, um, we have students often coming in with engineering, computer science, quantitative backgrounds, but we also have some students coming in with more traditional biology or um, you know, kinesiology type backgrounds that then want to apply and and pick up the quantitative elements. Um, and so we're actually really well positioned to do that from either perspective. So if a student comes in lacking the quantitative skills, you know, we're in the engineering school, it's what we do, we train them, we can bring them up to speed. And then we often have people who come in with engineering skills and want to now pivot into this unique sector. And then at that point, we can leverage all of our existing collaborations with the School of Medicine, the College of Health, all those different elements, College of Science, um to bring them up to speed on like the the neurophysiology and the applied clinical elements of the type of work that we do.
Excellent. Thank you. That's very exciting. Genuinely, thank you.
Yes. Okay, is there a motion to approve item three point oh two uh the new MS and PhD degree in neural engineering?
So moved.
Thank you, Jamie. And a second, okay? Uh, we have a first and a second on the item. Any debate or discussion? If not, I will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, well, congratulations. We're excited for the for the new uh new degrees. Thank you. We will now um let me make sure I'm on the right page. We'll now transition to, we're gonna invite Heidi Woodbury, the VP for Advancement to present items three point oh three and three point oh four, and we'll vote on each of those separately.
Great. Good morning. Well, we'll start with three point oh three, which are some really generous uh contributions to the Applied Science Building. And this morning, we're seeking your formal approval to name the following spaces in that building. First, the Crocker Science Complex and Crocker Science Plaza in recognition of gifts totaling eight point five million from the uh the Crocker uh Catalyst Foundation. Then also on that project, Willard L. Eccles um astronomy observation and observatory and observation deck in recognition of a half million dollar gift from the Willard L. Eccles Foundation. And Edward J. and Marilyn W. Zipser Auditorium in recognition of a half million dollar gift from the Zipser's.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Heidi, and thank you to the the wonderful donors, very, very generous of them. So is there a motion to approve uh three point oh through three, the the namings associated with the Applied Science Project? Yeah, a motion.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. A second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve three point oh through three on the action agenda, I'd uh action agenda. Any debate or discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Okay, all. Oh.
Bye, Christian. Beat you to it.
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, Heidi.
Yes, item uh three point oh four uh is regarding a really generous gift to our crisis care center. So in recognition of a three point five million dollar gift from the Larry H. and Gail Miller Family Foundation um to uh to name the second floor in the Kim and Carolyn Gardner Mental Health Crisis Care Center, and it would be named the Larry H. and Gail Miller Family Foundation Healing and Innovation Floor.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion?
Maria, motion to approve?
Thank you, Maria. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a first, we have a motion and a second to approve item three point oh three. Any debate or discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Heidi, and thank you uh to Larry H. and Gail Miller family as well for that generous donation. Thank, and thank you to all of our great, great donors. Um, we will now go to three point oh five, and I'm gonna turn the time over to President Randall to present the physical development framework for the for the campus.
Well, uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, can you all hear me just fine? I'm gonna run through uh a set of slides. Um, and before I start, I just want to say thank you uh to the many, many faculty, staff members, and trustees that have spent a lot of hours uh bringing us to this point. Um, there is a lot of work that will not be shown today, but that will be shown a little bit later on uh that has gone behind the the basic logic of this. Um, but I just want to take a moment to thank them. Many will be online to answer trustee questions as we as we move forward. Um, the trustees will be asked to approve four different motions at the end of this. As I go through, I will try to point out some of those motions. At the end, you will see uh the specific motions and and we'll take those one at a time as we as we move through. Um, so we have spent an extensive period of fourteen months uh using many experts, survey responses, participants, open houses uh to get the sense of where we should take the physical development of our campus. Um, and it has been uh remarkable, I think, the response that we we have received. It's been uh impressive in terms of uh individuals' engagements, and we have collected all of that data. And what you see in this framework here today uh hopefully reflects many of the opinions of those individuals. Um, I want to point out how this framework will be used. First, it is the basis uh for campus leaders as they decide and select and take individual votes on specific projects. Um, it 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 requires all of us to understand the assumptions that go behind it. Um, I want to make sure you understand what this is not. It is not approval for any specific project. Each of those projects will actually go through a campus master planning process, but also a capital improvement uh approval process. And while we're here, I want to actually just reemphasize what that capital approval process looks like. Uh, it's five basic steps, including planning, stakeholder engagement is necessary per project, formal reviews, and then a set of approvals by our senior leadership team, Board of Trustees, the Board of Higher Education, and then obviously for state funded projects um and many of the final approvals, there is legislative approval that it also has to go through. Uh, much of this capital approval process and the planning process will now reside in the Campus Master Planning Committee. Um, and in fact, you will see in one of our resolutions, the final resolution, we will be turning um, I think, uh responsibility over some of to some of the detailed planning and and organizing some of the data we've already gathered into very specific goals over to that Campus Master Planning Committee. So the little bit of that is the prologue. Um, we we offer this framework um in the context of what we believe are are solid university goals. We want to be a top ten public institution with unsurpassed societal impact. That means uh specifically that we uh take each one of our students and make sure they have outstanding outcomes, which we will measure by eighty percent graduation rates and ninety percent job placement rates. Much of the activity of this plan will focus on that student success, particularly as you see the way we build out an infrastructure for students living and thriving on our campus. Uh, the second major metric that we want to focus on is reaching a billion in research funding. And so as we talk about this, you will see areas of campus that will be developed to be able to attain and reach those goals. And then finally, um, our focus on serving the the uh citizens of this state, you will see um, you will see ways that we do that, in particular with expansion with our healthcare mission that in this plan you will see is specifically focused on our campus, but as we know, and we saw it in today's meeting, there's a lot of expansion going on off campus and extending the reach of our healthcare um, our healthcare mission. Um, some of the unique things about this plan is that uh you will notice, and we'll get to that momentarily, is that we're really transitioning from what has traditionally been a commuter campus into a destination campus. Um, that type of build out also helps us prepare for the infrastructure needed in the twenty thirty four Winter Olympics. And so these are a couple of the uh number of the goals that we've used to inform this plan. Key themes emerged. I will not get into each of these, but I would only to say that these themes uh get translated into two really, I would say, concrete items that you'll be voting on. One is how we divide the university into land use spaces, and we call those neighborhoods. And then the third, and then the second is actually some guiding principles that we need to do some more work on around metrics that hopefully feed these key themes that were identified in all of the feedback areas. So I want to jump now to um some elements of the first motion that you'll be actually voting on. And that is the notion that this campus will be divided into districts, and these districts will be used uh specifically for planning and different uses to reach university goals. Let me point out a couple of unique pieces of this. In the center, in the heart of it all, you will see a district which we call College Town Magic. Um, that is perhaps the, I would say, the highlight, the big element of this new plan and the largest change from what the past plan um imagined, a focused uh focus on building a community, not only for students, but also for faculty and staff, uh where we can engage together and build a community in a very, very different way. A couple of other things I would uh I would point out, and that is with our healthcare enterprise. You will notice uh our healthcare enterprise will likely expand uh to an area along Foothill Boulevard. That boulevard, that area includes part of the old Fort Douglas, which we will take possession of. And I guess within the year, you'll also note that the Fort Douglas also includes uh part of the of the College Town Magic experience. So these are our campus districts, and roughly we will then go through planning and detailed planning and parking and access uh plans for each of these districts and how they move and how they how they operate. Um, next, uh, another part of motion one, we will be offering up some guiding principles to achieve the university goals. Uh, I'll highlight a few of these. Best in class student experience, employer of choice for faculty and staff, exceptional patient uh experience, access and convenience. Um, we care a lot about where we are in terms of the stewardship of our campus environment and ecology. We believe that this plan will lean into where we are located in one of the most beautiful uh states and regions of of the country. And then finally, we want to make sure that it aligns with our strategic plan, which is called Impact Twenty Thirty. You will see the rollout of that in the coming uh four to six weeks. So those are kind of the guiding principles that we will need to expand on, what we envision. And this will be in motion four, is that we ask the Campus Master Planning Committee to establish metrics for what does it mean to have a best in class student experience, or what does it mean to have access and convenience? And so there will be more detailed guidelines that will will be developed, uh and some already have, but in each of those, in each of those areas. So our initial focus um of this plan and the build out, particularly where I think you see movement, will be in building what we call College Town Magic and developing that large yellow area that's kind of at the heart of campus. This slide simply uh, I think, indicates some of the aspirations uh that we are we're trying to uh trying to achieve. Uh, think of this, and and by the way, these renderings are very conceptual, but they do point out a little bit about the density and what types of spaces we're trying to design here. Um, this, uh, for example, uh, you know, shows what we're looking in terms of a twenty four seven college experience with housing, dining, integration with our arts and cultural spaces on campus, retail, uh additional recreation and exercise spaces, and certainly plazas and community spaces. Um, this is um, this is going to be uh an ambitious undertaking. This certainly has to has to be accomplished relatively quickly, particularly given uh the growth we're seeing in 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 demand for our 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 student opportunities. Um, this is just kind of some more conceptual renderings of different spaces that can evolve on campus. Uh, the large one on the left, we envision um uh certainly a modified and changing part of the part of the student union that will be in a second or third phase of 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 this plan. Um, I want you to focus on and get you oriented on this picture, because this, I think, is one of the, this is the the second motion that we will be asking you to uh to take a vote on. Uh, what you see here, if you see that plaza with the copper oriented uh figures and the large building to the right, what you see here is where the current John M. Huntsman Center, our athletic arena resides. Um, we envision that the district through this area uh calls for a relocation of this new arena. I want to make it clear that we have not decided where the new arena should go, and that we need to study the economics, the location, the parking, the access. Uh, and events will continue at our current Huntsman Center until a new arena is 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 constructed. But one of the large, uh, I think, trigger items for in for making uh College Town Magic occur is actually studying the relocation of the John M. Huntsman Center. And that will be the second resolution that you will be asked uh to 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 vote on today. Um, it goes without saying that as we build a campus of perhaps up to fourteen thousand students through this zone, we've got to think really carefully about transportation, parking, and open spaces. How do we move people in and out of campus? How do we address parking challenges, not only for the students that will be here, but the faculty and staff, and also athletic events and and cultural and community events that are going to be occurring on campus? The third resolution that you will be asked to vote on is one of a parking and a very, very rigorous parking study with the end objective uh in a very, very short period of time of approving a set of new parking investments on campus. Um, this one needs to move relatively quickly with respect to um decisions and planning from the Campus Master Planning Committee. We've got to find uh exactly the right location for those new parking structures and get those moving uh at a considerable pace. Um, so finally, um, I think I want to jump to Chris uh and have him put up the motions. The fourth motion, uh, the fourth to Chris uh, and have him put up the motions, the fourth motion, uh, the fourth motion is really a motion uh, to continue the planning process, to articulate and move the responsibility of the detailed planning from the trustees and uh, actually empower the Campus Master Planning Committee with a set of tasks that need to be done relatively quickly, so that detailed planning can occur in all of these spaces. So with that, I will stop sharing. Yeah, I'm I'm gonna stop sharing and then uh, ask Mark Harland uh, to jump in and talk a little bit about the major, I think, vote here that gets taken around the John M. Huntsman Center.
Well, good morning, everybody, um, I would like to to thank President Randall and his team for being so thoughtful in in looking into all of this plan, it's very exciting, I can say, working at four other campuses, that this is about the most innovative um, process and also possibilities that that lie ahead. In terms of the Huntsman Center, obviously, there's a lot of things that we've been talking about as a team uh, through the last few years, uh, it's a historical building that um, all of us have benefited from so much, but the timing in this parallel path of President Randall's vision also aligns with the timing of a building that is frankly um, not accessible as it needs to be in this day and time, we have one service elevator. Uh, I could go on and on about some ADA standards uh, that are expected now, so we're very excited to look at this possibility, to study this possibility, we have groups that that are on board already looking at at possible locations, as the president mentioned, and we'll report back uh, as we get those findings, but this is a fantastic opportunity for this athletic department to modernize and to move forward um, in conjunction with this overall plan, so we're excited to to be a part of this, we're excited to work with our fans who will be surveying for locations and surveying for needs and really moving uh, our arena sports into into this new modern era, so, thank you very much.
Chair, Chair Gardner, I I leave it to you to how you wanna manage discussion and and votes on the the motions, again, we have four motions to bring towards you. You may wanna open it up for general discussion now and questions, and then we can talk through the motions, uh, you're you're, turn the floor to you.
My call, thank you very much, President, and thank you very much, um, Mark, certainly exciting. Love to see, I always love it when we reiterate our goals and um, and vision for the university. Uh, the trustees have spent a a a lot of time on on this, and we appreciate all of the administration's time in helping answer a lot of our questions, that said, um, I'm gonna throw it out to the trustees, if any of you have any comments, questions, or anything in general before we go into the specific motions. And.
Chris, I just want to second your your comments here, uh, President. Uh, the the amount of time and thorough detail uh, that uh, we've gone through over the last months, uh, thanks to your team, thanks to Jeff and his team uh, that has been has been amazing, it was it was wonderful to be able to dig into every aspect and and to uh, uh, really ensure that everything was understood by uh, by us as trustees, so I'm uh, I commend you and thank you for that. And I'm I'm good at the moment, thank you.
Thank you very much, Basan. If there aren't any other uh, general questions or anything, um, President, why don't we put up the first motion, and I can read it? So the the motion one is that we move to approve the campus physical development framework with its guiding principles, proposed districts, and capital capital planning approval process, and I don't know if I can make the motion, Chris, but if so, I just made it.
I think you did, I think we're just looking for a second.
Okay, is there a second on the motion?
Second from Basan.
Okay, we have a first and a second, is there any uh, debate or discussion on motion one on the framework? Okay, if not, I'm gonna call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you, that motion passed, we go to motion two. I move, this is on arena relocation, so I move that we authorize campus leaders to explore alternative sites for the John M. Huntsman Center and present recommendations for potential locations of a new multipurpose arena along with an estimated financial investment for board approval by September. Uh, this motion supports moving the arena location to align with the vision outlined in the campus physical development framework and the College Town Magic District. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second, thank you very much, we have a motion and a second to approve motion two. Any debate or discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you, and motion two passes, motion three regarding parking and access. And I move that we direct campus leaders to conduct a comprehensive study of campus access, traffic patterns, and parking usage, availability and demand, and identify solutions to ease traffic congestion and enhance parking accessibility. I further move that campus leaders develop and present to the board for approval a comprehensive parking strategy and address the current and future needs of campus drivers in alignment with projected university growth over the next ten years. This work is requested by the June Board Meeting and should include a recommendation, a recommended location for a new parking structure or additional lots for board approval in compliance with the capital planning process. Do we have a second on this demotion, on this motion?
Maria, second.
Okay, I know there was a lot there, but is there any uh, debate or discussion on this?
Chair Gardner. One thing I like about this is the talking about the access to campus that we're going to be looking not only at parking and how we manage that, but the access, and um, I know our conversations have uh, involved talking and working with the city state to help ensure that our access streets um, leading through the city and along Foothill Drive remain open with sufficient flow, not only for our students and our faculty and our researchers, but also for patients, so um, I'm I'm encouraged that we have this um, this directive to kind of work with the city and and make sure that we can keep those lanes open, so that people uh, particularly our patients on uh, up on that mountain uh, can get to the help that they need.
I agree, thank you so much for uh, pointing that out, Katie. Um, we have a first and a second. Any debate or discussion, if not, I'm gonna call for a vote. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes, on motion four, it's board campus master plan committee. So I moved that the board direct its campus master plan committee to a, to commission a study to identify gaps, strategies, and opportunities for shared infrastructure and service across campus districts, focusing first on dining and parking. I ask that this work be completed and presented to the full board by September. I move that the board's campus master plan committee identify metrics and goals associated with the guiding principles identified in the campus physical development framework to be incorporated into a master campus physical development plan for full board review and approval by September. We have a a motion, do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Second. Thank you very much, uh, is there any debate or discussion on the motion? Not hearing any, I'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. I will now, Chris.
Yeah, uh, Chair Gardner, I think that that's the end of our uh, our full agenda, um, I would recommend we defer the reports from the SVPs, the Student Body President, and the Staff Council until April. Uh, if you're okay with that, and then the only other announcement uh, would be uh, March twenty-fourth for the trustees, we are scheduled for a a short, probably half hour uh, board meeting, again, Monday, March twenty-fourth at eight AM via Zoom to uh, to review and approve uh, tuition increase, I know many of you participated in the Truth and Tuition meetings last week, um, and this would be the outcome of that, so again, that that'll be via Zoom, and that's really the the single agenda item. And that's all I've got, unless the President has anything else to say.
Uh, and again, I just wanna thank uh, the Board of Trustees for your help in approving our uh, physical development plan framework, uh, we're excited about the future of where this university will go, and uh, and let's roll up our sleeves and start executing now, thank you.
Thank you, President, I will, um, do I need to call for a motion to adjourn the meeting, I will, so I will call for that. I'll motion that we adjourn the meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, um, we will close the meeting, thank you very much. Everyone, thank you trustees, thank you, President.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll talk a little later, thanks.